The City Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting is now in session. Today is Tuesday, May 13th, 2014. It is 6:00 PM. Let's rise for the flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would please remain standing.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father Jesus, we come to you tonight and we just ask that you be with these elected officials that this city is elected to conduct their business. We know Heavenly Father Jesus that whenever we ask you to lead and guide us, then the things and decisions that are made will be made for the best. We just ask that you be with each one of them. Give them the strength, give them the courage Heavenly Father, to make the decisions that they have to make. We thank you for our community, we thank you for our leaders, we thank you for this city that you've provided for us. We ask you Heavenly Father Jesus to bless each one in it, and we'll give you the praise and thanks for it all. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please be seated. Roll call please.
Council Authority Member Janine Tucker.
Here.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council Authority Member Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Cal Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
At this time, any Council Authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest in any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. So, now we're going to proceed to presentations, starting with Item 1.1, Proclamation Declaring the Month of May 2014 as Asthma Awareness Month. Mr. Castillo?
Yes, sir. Right, am I in the right spot? Very good. The City of Riverbank Proclamation, whereas asthma has reached epidemic proportions in the United States with over 25 million Americans suffering from the chronic asthma, and whereas asthma is a leading cause of childhood hospitalization, long-term illness, school absenteeism in the United States, accounting for nearly 11 million missed school days and nearly 15 million missed workdays each year, and whereas each year nearly 2 million Americans are rushed to the emergency room, about three-quarters of a million are hospitalized lives, and nearly 3,500 die from asthma. And whereas 2011-2012 California Health Interview Surveys estimate that approximately 62,000 people in Stanislaus County have been diagnosed with asthma, of which 14,000 are children, about one out of every 10 kids. Nearly 40,000 residents, including nearly 9,000 children, are currently coping with asthma. And whereas the Health Services Agency has established an asthma coalition with over 120 representatives from the community, providers, health plans, American Cancer Society, American Lung Association, county and city schools, and the Central California Asthma Project to implement the school-based asthma program developed in the Coalition 2004 Strategic Plan for Asthma in Stanislaus County. Whereas Stanislaus County ranks in the worst 25 counties in the U.S. for some air quality measures, and whereas the mission of Stanislaus County Asthma Coalition is to create an asthma-friendly community by promoting awareness, education, management, and prevention. And whereas the Health Services Agency, the Asthma Coalition, and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency are encouraging Americans to identify and reduce their exposure to environmental triggers in homes, schools, and incorporate environmental controls into their asthma management plans. And whereas Stanislaus County and the City of Riverbank recognize the need to raise asthma awareness, now therefore let it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Riverbank does hereby proclaim the month of May as Asthma Awareness Month and commends this observance to all our residents. Signed this day, May 13th, 2014, the entire City Council.
Excellent.
Sir, thank you very much for what you're doing, and the mic is yours if you would like to speak.
Thank you. On behalf of the Stanislaus Asthma Coalition and myself as a respiratory care practitioner, for the last 35 years, I've been treating children and adults with asthma and realize that our efforts towards better air quality, understanding of asthma, and helping children spend more time in school and less time in the hospital are fine things for us all to be a part of. And I appreciate the City of Riverbank and the Council for this proclamation. Thanks very much. Take care.
Thank you again, sir. Thank you very much. (Applause) Item 1.2, Proclamation Declaring May 15th, 2014 as Peace Officer Memorial Day and the week of May 11th through 17th, 2014 as Police Week. If I may, Chief, why not, please?
Oh, party week.
Do you have the second one? Okay. The City of Riverbank Proclamation, whereas members of the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Peace Officer Week. And whereas the members of the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department and Riverbank Police Services play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the City of Riverbank and the residents throughout the county. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the challenges, duties, and responsibilities of our officers, and that members of the police services fully recognize their duty to serve the people by protecting life, property, by standing up against violence and disorder, and by shielding the innocents against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas these peace officers, by their faithful and loyal devotion to duty, have established an enviable and enduring legacy of public service that is cherished by this community and is woven into the fabric of our history. Now therefore let it be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Riverbank that we urge our citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their communities have established, has established for themselves the rights and security of all citizens. And be it further proclaimed that the City of Riverbank will observe Thursday, May 15th, 2014 as Peace Officer Memorial Day and the week of May 11th through the 17th as Police Week in honor of those peace officers who through their courage deeds, courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in performance of their duties. Signed this day, May 13th, 2014, the entire City Council. Chief, thank you very much. Would we like to say a few words?
I just want to say that I humbly accept this, knowing full well that officers and deputies across the nation and even locally have paid the ultimate price, along with their families, to protect and serve.
And thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. (Applause) Item 1.3, Proclamation Declaring May 18th to the 24th, 2014 as National Public Works Week in the City of Riverbank. City of Riverbank Proclamation, whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operations of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And whereas health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on the facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as the planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel whose staff public works department is materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore let it be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Riverbank that May 18th through the 24th, 2014 is National Public Works Week. Signed this day, May 13th, 2014, the entire City Council. Sir, thank you for all that you have public works done. Continuing with presentations, Item 1.4, Update to Demographic Studies Being Prepared by the National Demographic Corporation Analyzing the Cities, City of Riverbank at-Large Electoral System Pursued to the California Voting Rights Act.
Mayor, Members of the City Council, as you know, the city has been reviewing its obligations in regards to the California Voter Rights Act, and this evening Mr. Tom Hallinan, our city attorney, will be providing an overview of this act and what the city has been doing to address the issues raised by it. Mr. Hallinan.
Thank you. The acronym for the C-D-R-A is the California Voting Rights Act. Some background, the act requires cities and local agencies to implement district elections where the voting demographics in at-large elections have historically prevented a protected class from electing candidates of their choice. A protected class is voters who are members of a race, color, or language minority group. At-large elections are where the voters of our entire city elect candidates who may reside in any area of the city. Conversely, district elections, voters are within a defined boundary and elect candidates who must reside within that election district. The act requires a transition to district elections when a protected class in an at-large system repeatedly votes for similar candidates, but those candidates are not elected. This is what you've heard the courts define as racially polarized voting. Courts, if you have racially polarized voting, courts require cities to conduct a demographic study to confirm whether it exists, and if so, to begin the redistricting process, and that's what we've done. The act includes broad remedial provisions for courts to require cities and local agencies to transition from at-large elections to the district elections, and also broad provisions for cities to pay attorney's fees to parties that enforce this act's provisions. That is, if you, somebody makes a charge that you have racially polarized voting and you do nothing, and they file a suit, you are obligated without any further evidence to pay their entire fees up to that point. Compliance with the act for Riverbank, we took the notice seriously when we received it in February of 2013. The Latino Community Roundtable expressed concern that our at-large system did violate the California Voting Rights Act. In March, you authorized $25,000 to conduct a democratic study, excuse me, analyzing the voting patterns of city residents in connection with the California Voting Act requirements. December 13, you issued the RFP for the consultants to conduct the demographic study, and in February 14 selected National Demographics Corporation, or NDC, to conduct the demographic The city's agreement with NDC includes four options. Number one, create a database of city demographic records and history of candidate elections. Number two, analyze voting patterns of city residents in statewide elections. Number three, analyze voting patterns of city residents in contested local elections between 2000 and 2010, and then if required, to recommend new districts for your consideration. NDC has completed the Level 1 analysis of the basic election data. The cost of that was $3,150. We then requested that they go ahead and skip Level 2 and go straight to Level 3. That will cost between $2695 and $5390. And if the data shows that districting is required, NDC will then conduct Level 4, which is the basic districting or redistricting. And the cost of that is approximately $8,400. So in total, the consultant costs will fall within the range of $14,45 and $6940, which is below your authorized amount of $25,000. So we'll be back after the Level 3 analysis, and maybe the start on the districts is done in anywhere from three to five weeks.
Okay, thank you. All right, Item 1.5, Status Report on the Riverbank Downtown Specific Plan Preparation.
Yes, Mayor, Members of the City Council, as you know, we have been working to update and revise the draft downtown specific plan, and at this time, we are prepared to expand the outreach to get some feedback on that document. Our contract Community Development Director, John Anderson, is here this evening to provide an overview on that process, to bring all of you, as well as the public, up to date on what the plan is for getting additional feedback.
Thanks, Joe, Mayor, Members of the Council, John Anderson, Community Development Director, City of Riverbank. Tonight, we're just giving you kind of an update, status update, on the downtown specific plan. When I first started working here back in August of 2013, there was three big issues that were put in front of me. One was the, obviously, working with the LRA and the LRA specific plan, the other was establishment of the mixed-use zone, and the other is getting the downtown specific plan back up and operational. One of the big issues we've had with the downtown specific plan as a format document is that it was put together in a publishing software, which we didn't have. So there was a formatting issue that we had to overcome because we obviously felt there was a number of technical changes and corrections to the document that had to take place, not to mention the fact that we believed that there were a number of folks in the community that had constructive criticisms of the plan and that those changes need to be reflected in a document that was more, that was more current. So a lot of work has been done to put it into a context and a form that we can all appreciate, so that's what a lot of the effort's been put to date. This is a process that has been going on for forever. I mean, it started in '06, but you've got to remember that was a time that we were updating the general plan, general plan EIR, and obviously processing a number of other entitlement process projects. The downtown specific plan, you know, you've got a kind of a staff report update in your package. Tonight, there's a number of policy issues relative to the downtown specific plan that I want to kind of just briefly touch on tonight. First, that the plan relies on a rail underpass using Santa Fe Street, so I'm going to go through a couple slides here. This is the specific plan areas that currently exist. There's some questions in the community as to how these boundaries were ever established, so I think there's got to be some discussion with the community members, business owners, invested property owners, as to exactly what that boundary line should consist of. So there's some, some discussion in my report to you tonight about, you know, possibly drawing that boundary back, not having it all the way out to 8th, and maybe, you know, terminating the line somewhere around 4th or maybe 5th, certainly including those properties along SR 108, along Atchison, including some of the properties that are owned by the Sutler family and others, to pick up the commercial properties along SR 108, but not necessarily, you know, some of the neighborhoods and whatnot around Cardoza Middle School. So that is something that I think needs discussion amongst the community. One of the items that is critical to the plan effort, it would link the old cannery site owned by Sunganji and others to the downtown area, is the notion of an underpass using the Santa Fe Avenue alignment. This is, these are pictorial exhibits that are presented in the draft unapproved specific plan. This is a, is a very costly improvement item. It's definitely part of the plan, as I understand it. Again, integral part to link both the redevelopment of the cannery site to the investment that's made in the downtown Riverbank area. Estimated construction cost for this type of an underpass, which would be vehicular and pedestrian, is in the neighborhood between $5 and $10 million. Why such a variation in cost? Well, there's a lot of issues associated exactly with the design dynamics of this facility. Based on prior commitments that the council has made with the property owner with Sunganji, is that Sunganji would not be under 100% obligation to fund this underpass project, so it would have to be spread citywide. So as part of the nexus analysis that staff is updating, this improvement item is part of that nexus analysis to be, to be paid for by all new development. So it's not just specific to the downtown specific plan area or to Sunganji, but it becomes a citywide community item. Another one of the other issues is dealing with Patterson Road. Staff has been spending a lot of time lately on how to come up with a concept for Patterson Road that accommodates all forms of traffic, and we're talking about vehicular truck traffic, pedestrian traffic, and bicycle traffic. This serves as a vital link between the west side of town to the east side of town, and certainly to Riverbank High School. So we're very aware of that. We've got a number of right-of-way constraints associated with that. The right-of-way exhibits that were shown in the draft specific plan illustrated Patterson Road as 60-foot of right-of-way. I think what we're finding out right now, in order to accommodate the type of traffic that the EIR and the downtown specific plan suggested, that we need at least four lanes of travel plus the center median, and we'd like very much to be able to get a dedicated bicycle route, a dedicated Class 1 bicycle path, I should say, along the north, north of Patterson Road. So we're working very hard to make that type of thing happen, as well as safe pedestrian and vehicular crossing at the BNSF line right there next to First Street. So that's very important, and integral part of downtown specific plan, some of the operational issues that staff is working with now. The EIR also mentioned a requirement for a quiet zone crossing. That became an integral part of the EIR that was certified by the council, that quiet zone crossing at least contemplates a quiet zone crossing at Patterson, and quite possibly also at Clarabelle. So we're going to be working that into the nexus analysis, and all new development would be responsible for picking up the cost associated with that quiet zone crossing. The draft specific plan, of course, was, was, was written at a time when we had redevelopment agency. As we all know, State of California has taken redevelopment agency away from local government, so we no longer have the financial abilities that was provided by the RDA to do things, to do things like complete renovation of the Del Rio Theater. Del Rio Theater continues to be a main icon to the downtown entry into the downtown area, but language needs to be revised in the document to suggest that we can, we can do what we can from an administrative standpoint to help promote development of the site, but it's going to be difficult to provide financial incentives for ultimate development of that site. The plan also called about, talked about a multi-story parking structure next to the Del Rio. And again, I'm not so sure that we have financial resources to do that unless, unless perhaps we talk about the establishment of a parking in Luffy and/or a parking district in the downtown area. And quite frankly, I don't know if we have a parking problem in the downtown core area because we're trying to entice and encourage more commercial development, more job development, you know, more folks in the downtown area. So that's something, again, the draft document relied on RDA funds to be able to support, and we don't have RDA funds available to us, so that's going to be a bit of a challenge. The downtown specific plan suggested a pedestrian connection somehow to Zarillo Park and Jacob Myers Park. I know this has been something we've talked about, you know, this community's talked about for many, many years, and, and, you know, locating that in the right location is going to be, is going to be a challenge. If the city ends up moving forward with a secondary crossing across the Stanislaus River for a secondary redundant sewer line, it's possible that we can do a trail as, or a bridge, so to speak, as part of that project. But again, that's, that's something that, you know, is, is, can certainly be talked about in the downtown specific plan, but it's something we're going to have to work with, you know, long-term as a, as a goal and policy. Getting to Zarillo Park over River Cove is a bit difficult. Right now, you have pedestrian paths that, you know, parallel the BNSF rail line under the viaduct. I mean, that's not a very good safe trail, safe passage, you know, to that park, and I'm, quite frankly, I'm not sure how else you, you do it, you know, unless you do an overpass or some other technique. So that's something that we're going to be dealing with. The light industrial development, not only in the cannery site, but also including the old, the former dairy properties and, and, and others, you know, between First and Second Street and Third along Santa Fe South, Riza Lopez Properties and others, you know, are job centers. I think that, you know, to suggest that we don't allow any jobs in this area is, is a mistake. I think that we need to work with those property owners, work with those business owners to make sure that concerns relative to commercial traffic, concerns relative to hours of operation, employee parking, et cetera, get addressed, and if possible, work, work with those business owners to open up retail opportunities. And I, so I think that's some additional changes that, you know, can be drafted into the specific plan document. There's a, there's a notion that because we're doing a specific plan, we have the ability to collect monies to reimburse the city for the effort associated not only with the environmental document, but also associated with the development of the downtown specific plan as a planning tool in and of itself. Not sure if the council is willing to do this, but certainly it's an opportunity as development occurs, and, and as a person would come in and I guess they would rezone, not necessarily rezone, let me say, when they redevelop a piece of property, that they potentially could pay their pro-rata share of these expenses. Really, there's no other, other fees that this downtown specific plan area would have to pay other than just the standard system development fees, because those are, most of facilities are available to it and capacities are provided. So there's no, normally when there's a specific plan, there's other, you know, fees to support the infrastructure for that development area that would be necessary, and obviously opportunity to recoup costs associated with the planning effort. So at this point, steps to complete, I've kind of outlined those steps. The steps are outlined here. First is meeting with property owners and concerned citizens, which we've, we've done and will continue to do. We have posted the redline version of the downtown specific plan draft on the city's website, and it's available for anyone to take a look at. And again, it's in a Word document that we can manipulate, and we intend to, to change and modify to address, you know, as many of the concerns that we're aware of, that we can, we can handle. We're obviously presenting a workshop to you folks tonight, kind of, kind of confirming the process, and then if necessary, have additional study sessions with, with you, the City Council, to describe results of talks that we've had with business owners, invested owners in the, in the downtown area. With the end, hopefully, coming with Planning Commission, City Council hearings, I've suggested by September of this year. So that's kind of where we are. We have a certified EIR, we have a draft document that's, that's close to being done. There are still, are a lot of meetings that still need to be held with, with the downtown property owners. Unfortunately, the language and the support of the RDA has had, had been removed from the document, so it really becomes more of a, of a planning tool and certainly a design guideline tool as we move forward. I know that if you, if you talk with the, the folks with Sunganji, they're very, extremely eager, that's probably an understatement, extremely eager to have this plan ultimately adopted because they've been waiting since '06 for this to be completed, so they can move to the next level. I know there are other property owners in the downtown specific plan area that quite frankly want this, this effort to be concluded so they know what their future holds. There are some general plan designations on a number of properties in the downtown area that, in my opinion, will change as a result of this downtown specific plan effort, and those changes, obviously, everyone will have a chance to understand. And those changes, obviously, everyone will have a chance to understand what they mean and be able to participate in what those changes are. So I don't know, Jill, if you wanted to talk more about the process?
No, thank you, John. One of the things that we have come, had to deal with is that this plan was originally envisioned at a very different time. As Mr. Anderson has indicated, we had redevelopment at that point. The city was undergoing, you know, a booming expansion and the economy was, was thriving. And, and that changed in 2008. And as a result, some of the things that were envisioned in that plan initially, we need to step back. And I think that there is sort of a fresh approach that has come out of years of economic difficulties and challenges faced not only by the city of Riverbank, but the, literally the entire world. So with that, we want to use this opportunity well, sort of take a fresh look at some of those assumptions, to some degree, a little bit different. And what, and one way I've described it is the, the planning document right now sort of assumes a jump from step A to step C. And I think that in today's economy, we need to provide for some smaller leaps to meet our ultimate vision. And so as we talk about this with the, with the council and the public, is provide some room for those transitions to occur more naturally over time as opposed to having it, it sit as it is and then expect one major development to come in and change that. I also think that's more responsive to the business interests in the area and provide some opportunities for those incremental changes to happen by large and small retailers, large and small restaurateurs, as the case may be, and also really building upon the, the infrastructure we already have with our small local retailers that have some regional draws, as well as the cannery site and the cheese factory. So we will be working with you to establish some dates for the public meetings, and then we'll also be continuing to have one-on-one meetings and small group meetings as those opportunities arise.
My only recommendation is that when we go out to notice to the public, that we know it as the council, so we will meet our obligations, so we understand the start date and the end date for public comment.
Certainly. Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question, John, before you go. Sorry. Can you explain what a quiet zone crossing is? I'm not familiar with that term.
Well, I think the, the closest one we have is an Escalon. There's actually a couple of different quiet zone crossings there. It is, is a mechan- ends up being a mechanical device that the engineer is able to trigger from inside the train that sounds horns at the crossing. So if your, next time you go through Escalon, you'll see, you'll notice that they have speakers on several of their crossings that are directed down to the intersection. And those are speakers that are controlled by the engineer in the engine, so they don't have to sound their horn on, on their, on the train engine. It's literally, you know, it's a horn at that signalizer, or at that train crossing. That's the difference. And it's not cheap. It's a pretty expensive venture, so. It also includes some additional signage and some additional changes to the, to the crossing arms. So, yeah.
And an increase in liability.
And, and, and increase in liability, and it's some, it's something that has to be approved by CUPC too as well. I mean, it's not, you just don't go out and do it. So, but it is a mitigation measure as part of the certified EIR for the downtown specific plan.
Thank you. Item two, public comment. No action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council LRA board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the city council LRA board. Do I have public comments?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, city council members, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ramon Bermeires from Riverbank. And, here is, I went to a meeting with the commission agent, always known as COA, as a member of advisory council for the Stanislaus County Area Agency on Aging AAA, and the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors. I want to bring in something that they didn't know about in Riverbank, that we have Friday's lunch, Friday brunch, that we have, thanks to Ms. Councilmember Darlene Barbara Martinez, that's provided from Central Valley Resources. And we started in January, and I wrote the article and write for them from the Riverbank News. The matter came about that they have different committees for different sections of the, to have the senior coalition of Stanislaus County and the action that they take. Maybe two or three months ago, there was a city council meeting to where there were different committees given to different members of the council, and to you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't know if I got distracted or something, but I didn't hear anything about the aged, the seniors, or whatever you want to call us. And I wanted to know if there would be the opportunity for somebody to come to these meetings representing Riverbank. And I've seen a lot of enthusiasm from Ms. Darlene Barbara Martinez, wanted to know if they could make it official for her to be one, that if she's willing to represent us in this type of meetings or send somebody to her place, what they call it, a substitute, in case that she might not be able to go. I brought them also to their attention that on last Friday, the students of Riverbank High School that are in the culinary class with instructor Ms. Nina Sandoval came over and served, came over to serve the soup and sandwiches that they gave us on Fridays. And they were very attentive, very, very nice people. And I let you know the same thing that I let the group yesterday know. We have a lot of real good teenagers, young men and women here in Riverbank. Don't let that fool you about gangs and about drugs and about this and about that. It's very minimal comparing to the bunch of good people that we have. Thank God we have more good than we've had bad people here. And I wanted to let you know, not only in Riverbank, in Stanislaus County, it showed on Friday, that even if the press don't come, they come only for the scandalous things, for the bad things that happen in Riverbank, but they don't show up for the good things that are happening in, in Riverbank sometimes. I would like to invite Ms. Virginia Steele to moments like that. They were very touching. They had a type of interview, one student, one member of the elderly that stayed along. They asked me for some words of wisdom by the end of the interview. And I had the one that I like to give. It's, there's two words you have that will open the doors for the rest of your life, and it's push and pull. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Randall Bradley, and I'm the new fire chief with the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District. And I just wanted to come tonight just to introduce myself. I, I look forward to working with each of you and to working with your city manager. I want you to think of me as your fire chief. I am your fire chief, and I know that we have a long history together, the two organizations, and I look forward to creating even a, a better relationship between the two organizations. One of the things that we're working on right now is developing a strategic planning process. And in that strategic planning process, we'll be looking at fire station locations and citing potentially a second fire station for the future. And in, in Riverbank, we just completed a standards of cover study, and I need to bring that to my, my board to discuss it as part of the strategic planning process, but something I'll definitely be working with your city manager and, and your planning department on, on, on looking at when, you know, and how we're going to fund it and, and, and that process. So that's one of the things we're working on. Still the new guy, I'm still kind of figuring everything out. But one other thing that, that we've identified, or that I've identified since I've been here is that we have a, a common interest in a, in a federal facility in, in your, in your city. And we want to work with you on that and I look forward to working with you on it. And I know that there are ongoing discussions about assessments and be, you know, we'll, we'll continue with those discussions. But a more pressing issue right now is just gaining access to that facility so our firefighters can get in and, and look at the commodities that are stored there and to have some familiarization in the event that there is an emergency there. It hasn't been inspected since 2008, and so we're very interested in gaining access. And we're hoping that my meetings with the city manager, we can come to some type of agreement so that could occur. But again, I've met the city manager on a couple of occasions. Now, we haven't actually got down, had the opportunity to sit down and actually discuss these issues, so I definitely look forward to that. Our administrative assistants have kind of been playing phone tag a little bit, but we will be sitting down. She has reached out on a couple of occasions, came to one of our board meetings, so I totally appreciate that, and I really do look forward to working with her and all of you. So thank you very much.
Any further public comment? Seeing none. We proceed to item three, the consent calendar, consisting of item 3A, wave readings, item 3B, approval of April 22nd, 2014, regular city council, local redevelopment authority minutes. Do I have, anyone wants to pull an item or discuss any of the items? Do I have anyone from the public wishing to pull an item or discuss any of the consent item, consent calendar items? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for recommendation.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar.
I second.
We have a motion to approve and a second.
Council authority member Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Council authority member Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Council authority member Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item 5.1, first reading and introduction by title only of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Riverbank, California, amending Title 15 Land Usages Chapter 150 Building Regulations, adding new section 150.16, solar, photovoltaic power systems of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
Mayor Members O'Brien, Mayor Selah Garcia, our Director of Finance and Partial Overview Development Services will be presenting this item to you this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Tonight's discussion will, will be regarding our solar and photovoltaic power systems and our permitting process as it stands now, and looking to change that to be more streamlined and to match some of the state's requirements. So tonight's purpose is to amend our building regulations to include a solar photovoltaic power systems section, which will allow us to assess the fees and establish the process for applying for permits. So we know some of the benefits of solars and photovoltaic systems, and we know that renewable energy is helping to power the state's economy. It's reducing our reliance on imported energy sources. It's helping to decrease air pollution. It also increases energy reliability for our residents and businesses by generating this electricity that they use near where it is consumed. And this type of energy can provide us stable electricity prices for our residents. So our intent tonight is to standardize our permitting requirements for small solar photovoltaic installations. These requirements have been set by the state, and the city will adopt these by reference into our city code of ordinances. It will also allow the city to establish the necessary fees for the permitting and inspection process. And so a recommendation for tonight is that the city council conduct this first reading and introduction by title only of the ordinance and consider its approval at the second reading on the May 27th, 2014 city council meeting. Once the ordinance has taken effect 30 days after the second reading, we will bring forward to the city council for their consideration the fees that we will establish in order to be able to issue the permits.
Is there any special training for the engineers to be able to inspect?
There's not too much more training than what they already have. They receive a regular code updates that provides them with the information they need as well as a very nice manual that the state has put out to all of the cities and to all of the counties that actually give a very good overview of what the standardized permitting process is as well as the inspection process. And so that's what will, the city will be following.
Okay.
Does there seem to be an increase of solar in our community?
Most definitely. I would say that over the past year or so, probably about 50 to 60% of the permits we've been issuing have been solar in nature.
And if we pass these costs that are incurred, we'll be picking those up with fees, right?
Correct.
You have a question, comment? This is public hearing. Any comments or questions from the public? This is the first reading.
Correct.
This is just, we don't, we cannot take action, but except for move it to the second reading in 30 days.
Read the title and move to introduce it.
Okay. I have to read the title again?
Not again, but just, we have to do two things. Read the title and then a motion to introduce it.
Okay. Do we have a motion to introduce item 5.1?
I'll make a motion to introduce item 5.1.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to introduce and a second.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item 5.2, first reading and introduction by title only of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Riverbank, California, amending Title 15 Land Usage Sat- Chapter 153, zoning addition new section 153.004, application and processing fee of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
And Mayor Members of the city council, this item will be presented by Mr. John Anderson, who, as I previously introduced, is a contract community development director for the city of Riverbank.
Mayor Members of the council, John Anderson, here to talk about item 5.2 on tonight's agenda. This is a cost recovery item. This is an item that allows the planning department to recoup costs, not only associated with environmental review and preparation, but also all planning-related applications. So currently, the, the fee schedules that the city has adopted are on rates that are extremely low. A number of those fees don't even necessarily cover the postage that's necessary to, to send out notices to the adjacent property owners, et cetera. So the intent here is to put into ordinance code an opportunity to, to make modifications to the fees based on a deposit. Obviously, we'll be putting together budgets so the applicants are aware of what the cost might be, a budget, so it'll be a deposit, and then they would settle up on the processing cost prior to hearing so that, and so that we, we have full, full cost recovery for planning, planning-related service fees, engineering, legal, basically all city expenses associated with the processing. I included in this, this is again an ordinance, this will be the first reading, the ordinance, then you'll go through a second reading and a subsequent meeting. I put in there a copy of what we're suggesting the fee rate scheduled to be, exhibit A, that's something you'll be considering in July, not tonight, but I wanted you guys to have an idea of what we're looking at. We have done a complete survey of, I don't know, nine or 10 different cities in and around this area, so you'll be able to see those side by side when you physically take action on the fee rates that we're suggesting. In exhibit A, you'll see that in some areas, like a conditional use from that, we've just had, you know, flat fee. Same thing with lot line adjustments, and the same thing with architectural site plan review. So these are items that we deal with on a customary basis, you know, pretty much all the time. The more complex projects like general plan amendments, rezones, you know, map applications and whatnot. and whatnot are usually fairly complex, require a lot of staff time and energy, and we want the opportunity to collect, you know, the expenses that are associated with that. So, this is definitely part of a cost recovery program and something that we feel pretty good about bringing to the city. And it's pretty customary and standard from other jurisdictions, so it's not out of the ordinary. Are there any questions?
Are your fees comparable for services in other communities?
Yes, they are. And Councilmember Campbell, you know, when we bring the actual fee rates back to you, as I said, you will have a side-by-side comparison, apples to apples, of what other cities in this county and this surrounding area are currently charging for these same services. So, you'll see where our fee is suggested to be, where we have been, and where the other cities are currently charging their fees. And we're right in the middle.
Okay, so we wouldn't be extremely higher than the other communities?
Absolutely not.
To affect our competition?
Absolutely not. And what's critical here, because the applicants always want to know what are the costs going to be associated with their application, is that we would be under obligation to provide a budget to them so they have an idea of what the cost would be, which is not difficult to do.
Okay.
Okay.
No second. Are there any public comments? Seeing none. I bring it back for item 5.2 to be introduced.
Let me introduce item 5.2.
I second.
We have a motion to introduce item 5.2 and a second.
Council member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Council member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Council member Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item 6.1, fiscal year 2014-15 proposed budget overview.
Mayor members of the city council, it is that time of year again and we are preparing for the fiscal year 1415 budget. And at this time, I'd like Ms. Maricela Garcia to provide an overview of the budget document that was submitted with the staff report when it was posted on Thursday night and also provided you a hard copy over the course of this evening and yesterday. So, at this time, again, I'd like to hand it over to Maricela Garcia. It seems like we're doing a tag team between John and Maricela this evening, so tag your it, Maricela.
Good evening. Tonight is just a very quick, brief overview, sort of the Cliff Notes of the budget document that you were presented with in your agenda packet today in preparation for the May 21st, 2014 budget workshop, which will be held at the teen center at 6 o'clock PM. Our general fund status for this upcoming fiscal year is actually projected to end in a structural surplus. Therefore, we have met our strategic plan goal for the city manager to present to you a structurally balanced budget. We're looking at estimated revenues of a little bit over 8.2 million and expenditures of a little bit over 8.1 million. And so, our anticipated ending reserve will be slightly higher at 10.61. You will want to note that for this current fiscal year, we are projecting to end the year slightly below the 10 percent reserve, but the funds that we will be receiving next year will bring us back to that required reserve amount. Our revenue projections for the next fiscal year, we're looking at a slight decrease of 1.46 percent, the majority of that being some one-time monies that we received this current fiscal year, mainly the property tax administration fees that were received, which we will not be receiving the next fiscal year. Our estimated expenditure projections, we'll be looking at a slight decrease of 1.5 percent due to some savings that we'll be having in our, particularly in our health insurance. And so, that will factor into some of the savings that we're projecting in the general fund. Our gas tax fund will end with a healthy reserve of 30 percent at this point in time. And I apologize if that should say structural, no, that's correct, structural deficit of 47,000. But we do have to remember that some of these funds are set aside for capital projects. And so, we do have our annual ADA upgrades that we set aside funds for, and so we make sure that we set aside the necessary monies in order to go through our ADA transition plan and try to address any issues that are addressed. In terms of the revenues for the gas tax fund, we'll be looking at a slight decrease based on the projections that are provided by the state of California. And for expenditures, we're also looking at a decrease mainly due to a project that occurred this year that will not be occurring next fiscal year. Therefore, no more funds are necessary to be appropriated in the upcoming fiscal year. The sewer fund unfortunately is looking at a structural deficit of over $220,000. That really highlights the need for the city council to consider performing a water and sewer rate study, something that both Michael Riedel, our deputy director of public development services, and myself have been working on. We will be providing you some information on the request for proposals that was issued and the approximate cost for a study which would encompass both our sewer and water funds. Overall, our revenue projection for the upcoming fiscal year is estimated to decrease by 1.5 percent, but we are looking at an increase in our sewer collection expenditures and a slight decrease in our sewer treatment plant expenditures. Our water fund status is, at this point in time, is a healthy reserve of 43.7 percent estimate. We're looking at savings in the upcoming fiscal year due to a bond that has finally matured and that we've paid off. Therefore, those funds can be re-appropriated to some very much needed delayed maintenance that has been occurring over the past couple of years. The revenue projections for the water fund are looking at possible 2 percent increase with the expenditure projections actually dropping by 3 percent. And just to give you some upcoming dates, we have our budget workshop at the Riverbank Teen Center on May 21st and hopefully be able to provide to you, for your consideration, the final budget at the June 24th city council meeting. Within your binders, you'll find a lot of the supporting documents and details for all of the city's budgets for our major funds. At the time of the final budget adoption, you'll also be presented with some of the smaller funds that we have, mainly the capital improvement funds that we have throughout the city. Those projects are normally set through the capital improvement program, which is something that staff is currently working on as well and will be presented to the city council for consideration.
Thank you. We will have a lot of questions, I am certain, on the 21st.
And we will be prepared for this.
And Mayor members of the city council, I'd also like to add that the budget advisory committee has reviewed this document and reviewed it line item by line item, and they also have a meeting tomorrow evening in these chambers to discuss their recommendations that they would like to make to the city council. And Maricela is the staff liaison to that committee.
I have gone through it line item by line item. I have some questions, we'll talk privately on it. Or with Jill, one of the two. This is a public hearing, meeting. Any comments on the 2014-2015 budget? Seeing none. I bring it back and all we do is accept a report, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Any rejections of it?
We're projecting a structurally balanced budget. I think that's a good news, much better than where we've been at the last couple of years at this point in the game. So, things are moving in the right direction.
Item 6.2, process for consideration of facility fee waiver request.
Yes, Mayor members of the city council, one of the things that has come up occasionally is the city's process for using or issuing facility fee waivers. And it's changed over the course of the last five, six, seven, eight years and it's not been, so that's created some confusion for groups that were used to having it happen one way, let's say four or five years ago, and then having it happen a little differently since I've arrived. And so, at this time, Sue Fitzpatrick, our director of Parks and Recreation, is prepared to overview this process, what our recommendation is, and to get your feedback for how we can move forward and hopefully minimize that confusion, make it consistent for everyone and fair for everyone. Sue.
Mayor members of the city council, so over the years, what we do is we come to the city council for, it might be park reservation fee review, recreation program fee review or facility use review. And the facility use, when we talk about that, we're talking about the community center and the scout hall, probably our facilities that we rent out or provide for the community to use. So, those fees aren't changed very often, so you don't see us coming and asking for those very often, for the review of those. So, as the city manager mentioned, we did come to council and established fees years ago for the scout hall and community center fees, and those fees are working. What has gotten to be somewhat confusing is the fee waivers, service clubs. We had established a lesser service club fee to help service clubs and nonprofits do their fundraisers, and over the years, that got kind of applied inconsistently. Some groups would pay custodial only, some groups would pay the full fee that we had established, some would not pay a fee at all. So, that made it difficult for our office on how to apply that. So, we wanted to come back, kind of review the fees that we have in place and get direction from council on how to handle that. So, tonight, we're really, all of our fees that we have in the process for our city as a whole have been working very well. This is the one that we wanted to kind of review. So, the current facility rental fees that we have in place, we had established a non-resident fee for the community center, for example, of $1,000. That includes custodial, all of the services that somebody needs, and that would be for a wedding, anniversary party, something of that sort. The resident would be $900, so we had a little bit lesser of a fee for residents, and then we dropped it down for service clubs to 350. Scout hall was less as a smaller building, so you can see that the non-resident fee was $125, resident 100, service club 85. Again, that includes the services that they need. And the meeting fee was across the board. If someone wanted to use one of the buildings for a meeting, it would be a $25 fee. So, as I mentioned, these fees have been in place for many years and they've been working for the most part. The waivers and reduced fees, the service clubs, kind of, most of them are paying just the 60 custodial fee or no fee. The senior mill program was added, which we all know is a very good thing, we all know that, but that added 12 hours a week use that normally the facility wasn't in operation. That's more heating, air conditioning, utilities. So, we are noticing that some service clubs, most do not pay a meeting fee. They've been kind of grandfathered in, and then we established the $25 meeting fee for those that came after. So, that's kind of how, where we stand right now in our kind of inconsistent fee application. The enterprise fund is what the community center and scout hall buildings are budgeted under. So, we have the general fund we work with, with a lot of our programs, and then we have what we call the community center fund. And it was called the community center fund years ago because that was the only program really that we had, the only facility that we had, that we dealt with. As we've grown over the years, now we refer to it more as the 118 account or the enterprise fund. This fund is set up to break even or generate revenue. So, the goal for that is to be self-sufficient. Multiple programs now go through the enterprise fund, and that would be the swim team goes through that, the Jacob Myers Park parking fee goes through that enterprise fund, all of our contract classes where we have, you know, our ballet, folklorico, all of those where the instructor receives 70 percent, 30 percent goes back to offset the operating expenses of the facility. So, the enterprise fund, when I first started 15 years ago, it was in a $20,000 deficit. And the goal at that point was to be less dependent on the general fund. So, our goal was to pull out of that. And we did. For a while, we were flush, you know, we were, everything was supporting itself. We had the fees in the right place. Now, when we've increased the use of the community center and the scout hall for all these meetings, the senior mill program, which is, like I said, an excellent use of the facility, but it has now gotten us off kilter a bit to where that's why we're here tonight to talk about how to fix that deficit. The fee system for facility, if a fee system for the facility use is not maintained or sufficient, that is when we end up with the deficit, and we need the general fund or some other source to supplement the revenue. So, currently, our enterprise fund is operating with about a $5,000 deficit. And some of the service clubs and events that currently receive the fee waivers or the reduced fee are the Riverbank Federated Women's Club, which they do their Christmas luncheon. All of these are clubs and groups that help us in one way or another as well. The Historical Society Amarette Breakfast, which I think is coming up next week, this weekend.
This Sunday.
This weekend. The Royal Neighbors Veterans Luncheon, we know about that luncheon. The Royal Neighbors also provide money for our day camps, so they help us in turn as well. The Golden Age's Dance Club, which we just had that on the agenda, I think the last meeting, they're having some financial difficulty, but they're weekly and monthly dances. The Riverbank Christian Food Sharing, spaghetti dinner, Moikoi dinner. And some of the groups that receive the meeting fee waiver are some of the same groups, the Women's Club, the Yahhee Bowman, Valley Arts, Woodworkers, River Valley Stitchers, and those are groups that have been around for a long period of time. The proposed fee waiver structure that we wanted council to look at and consider is to continue the current fee reductions for the annual service clubs, kind of grandfather them in and just continue that, but get back on track for maybe new events or new service clubs that they would be required to pay the service club fee that was established years ago. The process that we would like to maybe suggest to happen that would make it easier on our part too is, and for council as well, is requests submitted in writing to the city council for fee waivers above that. Say someone comes in and they have a new event they want to do, it's one of the service clubs that are receiving the waiver or someone else, they submit a request, they come to council. If the fee waiver is approved, then at that point, an allocation be made from the general fund to the enterprise fund, so we know that we have covered that. We aren't coming at the end saying, hey, we've seen that, you know, we're in a deficit. This would create an ongoing awareness of the value of the fee waiver and the importance of maintaining the city facilities as consistent with our current general strategic plan. The financial impact, just putting a value to the meetings that are waived currently, it's about $1,200 a year. The value of the event fees that are currently waived is about $8,000 a year. This doesn't take into account the addition of the senior mill program. So, what we're looking at is a transfer of about $10,000 per year from the general fund to the enterprise fund that would provide the offset necessary to operate our facilities in the manner that we are at this point. Another option would be to look at increasing fees. That would be the other end of not having the transfer from the general fund. The proposed transfer of funds would be presented to the city council in June, if that is the direction that council would want us to go. Any questions?
You didn't mention the teen center, and that's one of your assets. Do you not rent the teen center out?
We don't rent it out. We have a few times, not much. The teen center is actually funded through the general fund. It's not part of the enterprise fund, so we have that budgeted through. It's not designed to be a rental facility, although we could rent it and we could generate some revenue. The teen fund is separate than the enterprise fund, and that's where the teens raise money and a lot of their events and programs are paid for by the teen fund or the... and a lot of their events and programs are paid for by the teen fund, or they've generated their own.
That I do understand, but it's a facility, just like if you rent out City Hall.
Correct.
You know, it's a facility that you could rent out for your enterprise fund, I thought. The areas that are not currently being charged, they're waived, we're in a situation where we can't sustain it without going through the general fund.
Correct.
Instead of charging them a $50 fee to conduct their meeting, except for the seniors, lower that to at least 25 to recoup 50% if you can of your losses. Have you thought about that?
Run that by me one more time.
Okay, some of the areas. What are the areas that do not get fees established? Moikoi is one.
Yeah, these are.
If they have a minimal amount that they, they're charged that help offset the loss, complete loss.
Right, so right now, some of these.
I know the Golden Age Dance Club gets charged, what, $50 for?
Correct.
Okay.
The others that are up here usually pay, for the most part, some don't, but for the most part, pay a $60 custodial fee, but what you're saying is maybe an additional fee to offset the operation and maintenance as well.
Yes, because that's what we're doing, we're operating and we're maintaining that building.
Correct.
Because in the long run, there's a lot of areas you have to have some type of improvements to attract more clubs, for example, a kitchen.
Correct. Yeah, we don't have an offset for improvements and replacements. So that would be an option, is to do that.
We're just looking at it tonight.
Right.
You're going to come back to us. For me, I'd like to see different options. We may just throw out, make you work harder and just throw it out, but, you know, it should be an option coming on up.
Would you do that?
I have a question. Sue, you say in your report here that the fee structure has been established as lower than our surrounding cities. When we rent this out, like, say, the community center for a wedding such as that, so we're not charging as much as some of the other cities, is it possible to maybe for these private functions to increase that a bit, to come closer?
We could.
And bring more revenue in that way?
We could, and we are lower, in some respects, quite a bit lower, and people tell us that, and we've also done the survey. But that would be another option as well, is to increase the fees for the for-profits that would help supplement the losses.
I would like to add, I think, just for the purposes of the public listening to this, that the fees that we are proposing at this time, or are considering, even if we added a slight amount, would not be sufficient enough to do the major capital improvements that are needed to that building. It's got an excellent setting and the park, and it's beautiful, but the inside is tired, the floors desperately need to be replaced, the kitchen desperately needs to be replaced, and I think that one of the things that, as a community service project potentially, to have some significant investment in that facility, but there is going to be an issue of market of recognizing the quality of our building compared to, let's say, a newer building in another city. And this evening is where to bring, to get some feedback from you. We're proposing at this time to grandfather the fee waivers in. If the council would like us to come back with some additional options, some maybe in between what the established fee is, we would welcome those suggestions. You are the eyes and ears to the community groups, you understand what the issues are that they're facing, and so we welcome that feedback, so we can provide some responses that are going to be effective.
The options I want to see are where we don't have to touch our general fund very much, so work with that, trying to get to that point.
Yeah, and one thing that we had the goal, as I said, we were flush for a while, is we did increase our contract programs, and we did a lot more in the community. So what happens is, everything does go into that enterprise fund, so we keep track on how all those other programs are going, and they're all over and above self-sufficient for the most part. So that's where we pinned it down to where is the problem. The problem here with this fund is the facilities. So we could increase contract programs to some extent, but then there's that point where we are at capacity, too, with the building, so the other option, as you mentioned, would be to increase the fees, whether a little bit for the nonprofits and then in some for the for-profits as well, could be two options.
Any other comment up here? This is public, anyone from the public wish to comment on item 6.2?
Ladies and gentlemen, the City Council, Mr. President, Mayor, excuse me, Madam Ramon Bermejo, again from Riverbank, and I wanted to ask if there is a deposit that is for cleaning, cleaning deposit that is made, and of this, but how much percent would it be possible to try to offer the people, you know, some type of service from the beginning with me, and maybe another couple of the senior citizens that we use the building, and some type of even things offered to those people that come over and contract for weddings and other events like that, that are being offered. For example, I don't know if they charge a, or if they have a fee for cleaning fee that is a deposit that in case they don't leave it properly cleaned up, then that fee gets held, and then the workers of the city have to finish cleaning up and hold that fee into the fund. But my idea was a couple of us offering for those afterwards, and then as a contractor, they would like to leave that cleaning fee and add it to that fund, like if it is $50 or $75, whatever it might be, and then I, as a volunteer, will come over and do that with somebody else to do the cleanup and put that fee into the fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor, Board of Governors, this is Edward Jones. Is it authorized for the city to have a gigantic flea market or yard sale? Wouldn't that bring in some kind of capital? I don't know where you would have it, somebody would have to think about some, but that's some way we can get a little extra cash to fill in what little spots we could use. Thought maybe you guys might, you know, think about it or something.
Any other further comments? Bring it back to the City Council. There is a matrix that's available for, you know, what is charged not only by us, but by surrounding cities, which does have cleanup and deposits like that, which are included in certain events, so that is available. All we're doing is accepting this report and moving on.
Yes, so.
We'll see this again in June?
We can bring back some fee schedules. One thing that is, just want to be clear, is that as we present these different proposals, I'm sure you've all heard the community groups talk about their various financial woes, and they also make the case rightfully so that whatever money they collect goes back into the city, and so that's many times the basis for their fee waivers. In the meantime, we'll continue to process fee waivers as we have since I've arrived, and that is that people who pay the fees, they just go through and they go through the reservation process, but if there is an individual or a group that wants a fee waiver, it does come to council, and council needs to take action to authorize the fee waiver if it so chooses. In addition to that, we'll explore some options for you, we can look at some numbers. One concern I have is that we can present numbers to prevent the impact on the general fund, but you might be hearing from your various constituents and your community groups as well, and so I just want to ask you to take that feedback, and please provide it to us as well, and we can incorporate that for different options as we proceed.
As we look at the general fund and the reserve and pending issues, I can see where we are going to be a little bit worse off than a slight excess.
When we look at one-time expenditures in the general fund that are being proposed for the next fiscal year, I mean, they're one-time expenditures, so it's not an ongoing, but there's a lot of pent-up, there are a lot of pent-up projects and issues that we need to be able to maintain, to maintain our facilities, and there are certain things that we are, I as your city manager is recommending are included. There are others that we took off the list as we went through. So things are, you know, are moving in the right direction, but certainly tight, and there's no end to the number of projects that we could add to the list.
We look forward to the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have clear enough muddled direction?
I do.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, move on to staff comments, 7.1.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the City Council, I wanted to compliment the planning directors of Stanislaus County for the event that they put on last Friday in the city of Oakdale to review water topics. Four of you were in attendance, along with four of our planning commissioners, and certainly appreciate the interest that we have in waters we go forward, so congratulations to John and members of the planning director's team. I also received comments that there was some watering at Crossroads last Friday afternoon about 5:00. We've determined that that issue was related to a temporary power failure, and the timers reset, so they were off, so the timing of the watering was off. We have hundreds and hundreds of sprinklers in the city, and so it is possible that they can be damaged, it can be a power failure, there can be, you know, a malfunction of some kind, and that does happen, and so we do appreciate it when people bring that to our attention so we can have them checked out, and in this case, it was, it looks like a temporary power failure. In addition to this, we talked earlier this evening about the budget workshop being conducted next Wednesday evening, which is May 21st, and that's going to happen at the teen center. It'll start at 6:00, and we'll go through the budget, department by department. The reason why it's at the teen center is that this room will be being used by the planning commission for a special meeting of the planning commission, so it'll be a very busy evening, and that also is concurrent with the farmer's market that is now underway. At this time, I'd like to hand it over to the police chief, who has a brief update for you on a return program.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Pleased to announce to everybody that our Drop the Drugs program has been reinstated. We had refined some of our protocols, so I apologize to everyone for the delay, but we have a secure drop box that was just installed today, and anybody that has unwanted prescription medications, they can bring them in during normal lobby hours and drop them off. The only thing that we don't accept right now are sharps, hypodermic needles, syringes. Those items have to be, they have to be delivered to Department of Environmental Resources on Morgan Road in Modesto, and people can do so on Fridays and Saturdays from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So it's a, I know we had a gentleman just yesterday that was asking, he actually brought some medications in and asked if it was up and running. I said, hang on to them just a couple more days, and we'll have it in place, and sure enough, they delivered it today, so we're set. That's it. Unless there are any questions.
And Mayor Sosa was going to talk a little bit about the Budget Advisory Committee meeting taking place tomorrow night, but we've already mentioned that, so I will save her a trip up, another trip up to the podium. But this one, though, I would like to have Debbie Olson, the executive director of the LRA overseeing the Riverbank Industrial Complex, with some very positive news.
Yes, I'm very, very pleased to let the council, the LRA board, and the public know that the local redevelopment authority, the city of Riverbank, has been, has received the 2014 Base Redevelopment Excellence Award. This is a national award given by the Association of Defense Communities, and the award recognizes communities, public leaders, defense leaders, who have demonstrated leadership, innovation, and excellence, and I am actually very, very proud of the community. We did not apply for it. In fact, it was one of the consultants that's worked with us that took it upon themselves to apply for us after being around the community and being around the site for about the last six or seven months. I really can think of no better way to recognize the hard work that we've done as a community and are doing, and I really think we should be tremendously proud. It shows that we do have success when we work hard, but I think we should be tremendously proud of the success we've achieved out at the Riverbank Army Ammunition Plant. Just in the last two weeks, there have been nine new Riverbank employees employed out there. We're seeing progress every week. I, you know, I'm thrilled, I'm excited, and I hope you are, and I hope the community takes a lot of pride in this, in this great award that we've received, so.
And Debbie, I'd like to just congratulate you publicly for the work that you've done out there as executive director, that you've had, you've had a very interesting balance of responsibilities, and I think that you've done an outstanding job. I'd like to publicly acknowledge you for that and your part in the city of Riverbank receiving this award. One of the interesting things about this is this is, this award was given by a group that is familiar with all of the bases in the United States that are undergoing closure. They know the issues that are being faced, and they know how we compare to other properties going through this transition process. And so I think to have that as sort of a stamp that we are on the right track is very validating of the work that's been done, and it's been done, Debbie has been boots on the grounds, but it's taken the vision and leadership of previous councils and this council to proceed and to continue on. And so while I certainly appreciate Debbie's work and her efforts can be commended, I also want to commend the council for giving the staff the direction and vision and the freedom to do what we need to do to make that project successful. And while it's technically not our property, I think that we've taken on and we are moving on, and we are doing as much as possible to advance the cause of economic development in the city of Riverbank and the county of Stanislaus with the Riverbank Industrial Complex.
I did make a point to send an email to thank our army partners and some of the other partners who, without their belief in us and are, and they're giving us a little, a long leash, in a sense, to do the things we needed to do, I don't think we could have achieved what we've achieved. So I do think the partnerships we've forged with the regulatory agencies and with the army are important. The award also, by the way, is being given on Capitol Hill at a congressional breakfast, so it is indeed, I think, really, you know, emphasizes that this is a significant award. So, thank you.
Debbie, thank you very much for that great news. And that concludes staff comments at this time.
All right. Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Thank you. I just have a couple things. Again, I just wanted to welcome our new fire chief. I know he's already headed out, but it's kind of nice to see we have a new fire chief in town. Debbie, I just wanted to congratulate you, too. That's really awesome, you and all your folks out there for all their hard work that's being done. It's a nice recognition to have, so we are very proud of that. Thank you. The River Fest was fabulous, and we had a, I know for myself and my family, we had a great time down there. It was just like, it was like the clouds opened up, oh, you know, between the storm.
Can you do that again?
Oh. It really was. It was a rough day before, but it was a beautiful day down there, and it was just a really quality city event, and I just wanted to say thank you for my family and I, that we got to enjoy that. It was really awesome, and the other folks around, too. I had a chance to tend the water workshop, and it was very informative, and again, another quality event that I think shared some significant stuff that's going around in our community about water issues. I'm glad I got a chance to do that. Farmer's Market, I haven't got a chance to attend last week at the kickoff, I had to commit with school that evening, but I'm looking forward to being there this Wednesday with my family, so I hope you guys will maybe be down there. And Police Chief Kylie, last but not least, great news about the drug drop-off. I've had several folks ask me about it, and I'm going to be pleased to be able to share that information with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
As Councilmember Leanne Jones Cruz mentioned, our first night at the farmer's market was very successful, and I also am looking forward to each week. Want to just mention that May 28th, from 5:00 to 7:00 is when we'll have the Want to just mention that May 28th, from 5:00 to 7:00, is when we'll have the senior vouchers. That's when they will be given out for fresh fruits and vegetables. And also, we'll have several service agencies, such as the Area on Aging, United Way, and Golden Valley Health Center. They're going to be providing valuable information to our community. And Debbie, congratulations on that award, and thank you to, also to the citizen advisory committee for their hard work and recommendations and vision for the Riverbank Industrial Center. I think that's it. Thanks.
Councilmember Tucker.
I just want to also share in congratulating and welcoming our new fire chief. We're very happy to have a new fire chief on board. I want to also extend my congratulations to Director Debbie Olson on the Base Redevelopment Award. That's fabulous. It's, I know there's so much work out there, and you were, everyone that's involved with the industrial complex works so hard out there, and so it's nice to finally get some, you know, recognitions for all the work that you do. Looking forward to the budget workshop at the teen center on the 21st, and I think that'll be a very exciting event. I really am, I really am looking forward to that.
I can see the excitement coming.
It is, it's going to be very exciting. And I'm also thrilled and excited to see the Drop the Drugs program. I think that's a very beneficial program, and I know that a lot of the residents will really appreciate that, as well as my household, so great deal, good deal. That's it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Campbell.
I agree with everything my previous council members have said, so I don't repeat it. Likewise, I would encourage everyone to save every drop of water that they can. When I went to that workshop about water, it's going to be very critical, and as the drought continues, it will get worse. And I'd like to encourage everyone to talk to friends, neighbors, get them to the council meetings. We need your public input. We're making some big decisions in the next few weeks. Now's the time to come and talk with us about it. And everybody have a good time down at Farmer's Market. I enjoyed it last week. Tell your friends, neighbors, we can make this thing very successful. I think it was great.
Thank you very much. The quality of the event, Sue, that you've been putting on is fabulous. Riverfest is just a small example of your key successes. And personally, I want to thank you for your endeavors. Jill, you do have a great staff, and Debbie, that's highlighted by that defense award. Looking at the recipients for this year, there are some very powerful individuals that'll be getting it, from senators to governors, House of Representatives, and Riverbank. So we're right up there with the, I don't know if the cream of the crop, but at least there's some, but again, congratulations and thank you. And with that, we're going to move into closed session, consisting of items 8.1, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code 54956.9 Alpha. Name of case, Adria Allen and Frances Allen versus City of Riverbank Stanislas Court, case number 670739.
And Mayor and Council, I will let you know, we are not going to be needing that particular closed session item. I'm sorry that I didn't get to you before you had to review that announcement.
I still have to announce it, and I still have to have public comment on it. Item 8.2, Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Subdivision B of Government Code 54956.9. One potential case, city council; one potential case, LRA. Item 8.3, Conference with Real Property Negotiator Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Property 3313 Santa Fe Street. Agency negotiator Jill Anderson, city manager. Property negotiator Jean Mondo and Betty Mondo Family LP. Under negotiation price and terms of payment. With that, before we go into closed session, are there any comments on the items 8.1 through 8.3? Seeing none, we go into closed session.